Good evening, Thousand Oaks, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for July 21st, 2014. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Turpale?
Here.
Chair Roundtree?
Here.
Commissioner Newman, absent.
This is the public comment portion of our meeting for items that are not on the regularly scheduled agenda tonight. You'll need to fill out a speaker card if you'd like to speak. We do have one speaker card filled out already. Mr. Kidway?
You're up, sir. And you know the drill. Please your name and address of residence for the record. Thank you, sir.
I'm Nick Igbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newbury Parks in '79 and director of a group of citizens called Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners. First of all, I would like to say that I and a lot of citizens are opposed to the so-called summer hiatus that this agency has been taking for a long time. It completely screws up the schedule. It's unwarranted and over the years it has become even bigger than it used to be, which was four weeks in August. What it does is that it creates a problem in planning, which you are a planning department for both, for the other departments too, and you might even end up, and in fact, I was going to do, look at the minutes, and I've had a disagreement with the policy of your department, which still says that you meet twice a month, and I'm not willing to change it to once a quarter, because I think, the staff can enlighten me if they want, but I don't think you have met more than five times in the last year. Maybe a little bit, seven, but that's certainly not twice a month. And I don't want you to meet for the sake of meeting, but if the state of the city is such that there are not enough projects, or projects not brought before you, because one project that was begging for to be heard was the Hooters Project. There were 700 people that wrote about and made phone calls. The total was about 1,200, and it never saw the light of day. And so many of the important decisions are made over the counter, and as we discovered with the massacre of the oak trees in Westlake, but there are others like the, what's the right word, iconic or historic Denny's on Moore Park Road that was just slashed by somebody who thinks that he can make a lot of money, which is his right, but at least a hearing should have been held. And it's, he turned it into three fast food places. Finally, after two years of sitting empty, one of them, I think, has been leased because there's a sign, but two of them still remain empty. And to bypass this body is just a travesty of justice. And just the thing about Hooters, the thing about the Hooters is that, like I had said and others had said, that now the Kilted Kiln or something like that is coming where the mermaid used to be. And the real problem will be, and the real hullabaloo will be, when something like what we have in Oxnard comes here and they will say, well, and they will say, well, this is the ideal thing. There are two similar places, not as revealing as ours, but there's a market for it, so let us do it. An election is starting, and the city council, your bosses, I guess, have refused to change the ordinance, which some of us have been calling un-American and asking for a change. I've talked twice, I mean, speaking here doesn't mean anything unless, I guess, maybe you are an occasional comer, is that our wonderful pastor, McCoy, I took a picture, but I could not print it for some reason. And it's dangerous to print the picture, but I mentioned twice, and I would mention it over here too, even though you're not a political body, but the signs do come under your preview, that there is a humongous sign on the exit, just before the exit, I believe it's not Roy's towing property, and there's no city council meeting, and it's unfair to the other candidates that are obeying the laws. And this is a sign that has never been repeated since '98. It's three times what the ordinance of the city allows. And he did remove one that was near the Denny's on Wendy Drive, but this one off, near Moore Park Road is there. If any of his supporters are listening, it's not good for politics and it's not good for the candidate. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We have no other public speakers at this time, so we'll go to Mr. Towne for written comments, announcements, and continuances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick response to one comment made by our speaker. Mr. Kidway, that the last couple of years, the Planning Commission has been meeting on average once a month, in terms of our actual meetings, that's the average. So rather than five or six times a year, we have been meeting on average once a month. And obviously, we have meetings scheduled, ten to twelve every two weeks, to try to enable applicants and others to do business in a time-sensitive manner. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also wanted to mention that we do have one supplement for the commission tonight. It's a memo regarding the second case, the North Ranch Country Club case, and it involves two things. One is additional information for the Oak and Landmark Tree Report, and then also one additional suggested condition for that project. Again, that's our second project tonight. And if anybody is interested, Ms. Vodril, to my right, has copies of that handout. And I will address this more later in that hearing. And that's all I had now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Will the clerk please call Case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case DP MN 2014-70173. Applicant: Mesa Ridge Oaks LLC. Request to allow installation of solar carports on the roof of the parking structure at the Oaks Mall. Location: 350 West Hillcrest Drive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chang, I understand you'll be leading us tonight in both cases?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. For your consideration tonight, development permit minor modification is proposed at the Oaks Mall at 350 West Hillcrest Drive. If you can turn the attention to the screen, PowerPoint in front of you. And for this particular project, the Oaks Mall is asking to allow a solar carport structure to be installed on the roof, the roof level, the top deck level of the parking structure at the Oaks Mall. And this is the existing parking structure at the Oaks Mall, which is close to the Nordstrom store, as well as the corner of 101 Freeway and Lynn Road. And what the project wants to do is install a carport structure on the roof, on the basis of the top level of the parking structure. And staff would like to provide a little background information about the Oaks Mall itself. And back in 1974, the Oaks Mall was approved by a city council. And back in 2006, Planning Commission approved a mall expansion, including new department stores and more open-air expansion to the east, as well as the subject parking structures. And like staff mentioned before, that this particular structure is located on the south side of the mall, adjacent to the Nordstrom, and very close to the restaurant, not restaurant, but the food court area. And the Oaks Mall, as well as Macy's Store, they do have permit, and some are already installation for the existing, for the rooftop panels, which is on top of the building. And you are seeing a little picture, actually, the previous picture showed the panels is already on top of Macy's Stores. And currently, the Oaks Mall Dick got the building permit, I think, last month, for the rooftop solar panels, for they covered almost the entire mall. But that portion of it won't be visible from any street view perspective. And for this particular project, the solar carport will not displace or replace any parking spaces, so they keep the existing parking spaces, and so they will continue, keep the existing handicap parking spaces as well. And for this project, with this project, along with other solar panel on building roof, this project will provide approximately 16% of the solar energy need for the Oaks Mall. And for the design, this design will have eight separate carport structures, and the overall length is about 532 square feet. And the total square footage is approximately 61,500 square feet. And compared to the, there was another solar carport project that Planning Commission approved back in June. That Westlake Plaza project is about 500 feet in length, and that square footage is about 30,000 square feet. So this project is a little bit bigger than the Westlake Plaza project that Planning Commission back in, approved back in June. And for the height of the structures, the measurement is 10 feet from the ground to the lower of the, lower end, lower of the beam. And the high end will be 14 feet and 3 inches. And for the exterior of the carport, including the poles, the beam, and fascia, will match the main color of the parking structure, which is about like a 10, 10-ish color, 10 color. And this is a side plan showing the parking structure location at the corner of 101 Freeway and Lynn Road. And you can see the dark, shady area, kind of rectangular space. That's where the eight separate carports is going to be. And this is a more closed-up cross-section showing the height of the structures and the design of it. And this long elevation is showing the overall appearance is viewed from 101 Freeway off-ramp. Basically, you'll get this partial perspective of what's, what it looks like, because right now they have a lot of existing trees right next to the off-ramp, so you probably won't see the entire length. But when you get in front of the parking structures, this is what the appearance will looks like. And this is one of the pictures that show the existing structure without the carports. Basically, the carport will be a little bit behind. You won't be readily visible at this point, because right next to the parking, edge of the parking structure, the ramp that going up and between the second level and the roof level, so there'd be actually driveway ramp right next to the edge of the carport structure, right next to the parking structures. So the carport will be a little bit behind the edge of the, about 40 feet behind the edge of the parking structure. This is the current existing view of the parking structure. And staff would like to provide some additional pictures. And what staff would like to do is provide like existing and proposed pictures, showing the before and after the carport install. So for this picture, it's showing the 101 off-ramp exit on Lynn Road, and showing the existing condition without the carport. And this is existing, and this is the proposed, showing the carport with the poles, with the roof. And this is a different angle showing, this is taken from Lynn Road going southbound. And this is showing the existing location. And this is showing the proposed simulation after the carport install. As you can see from this picture, that staff's requesting, and the applicant agrees well, to have a color to match the main color of the parking structure. So for the color-wise, to be very consistent with the existing color. And I think the roof will be actually lower than the, I think, the black railings or the tower feature at the, at the parking structure. This is a different perspective. This is a picture taken from Lynn Road overpass, and this is showing the existing conditions. And this is after the carport install. And even the carport, with, even with the carport installation, the building is still be lower than some of the existing buildings, or even department store building high. So the building won't go over what the maximum height is for this, for the Oaks Mall. And staff has done a visual analysis for this project, and staff mentioned before that carport is about 40 feet away from the edge of the parking structures. So the carport isn't readily, right next to the edge of the parking structure. So it'd be about 40 feet away. And the other thing is, the parking structure itself is about 400 to 580 feet away from the center line of 101 Freeway. So it is in staff's opinion that the parking structure, along with the carport, won't be, create a massive appearance if it's from a freeway perspective. And there are existing landscaping along the Oaks Mall frontage, as well as some landscaping provided by the California Department of Transportation. So some of the car, the car parking structure is not that visible from a different perspective. And this project, it is in staff's opinion, does meet the intent and purpose of the Sunday Highway Elements, as well as the freeway corridor, as freeway corridor design guidelines. And this project is exempt from CEQA as a Class 11 exemptions. Class 11, basically, this classified, this project is a carport as an accessory structure to an existing commercial facilities. In conclusion, staff's recommending Planning Commission to approve this project based on findings and subject to the conditions contained in their staff report. Staff is ready for any question.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Good evening. I noticed on page six, the bottom of the first paragraph, it says, "This is the first solar carport on the roof of a commercial parking structure." Now, I know there's a parking structure at the Janes Marketplace. Are there any other commercial parking structures in town?
Based on staff's recollection, for example, this building has a parking structure. M-Jen facility has parking structures. Janes Marketplace has parking structures. Las Robles Hospital has parking structures. That's what I can recall at this point. I think of like four, four other, four or five other parking structures in the city.
Okay. And then someday, there could be an additional parking structure at the Oaks Shopping Center.
For that particular project, it was approved, but was never built.
Right, right. And what about the one at the Lakes?
For the Lakes?
I don't know if that was, I was just kind of curious, how many there could be?
There was one conceptually approved as part of the Lakes, but we have never, of course, received the plans. The other structure that has been approved is at the, at the hospital, a new structure at the northeast corner of Lynn and Janes. And that will be in a future phase of the hospital's development.
I just didn't consider that commercial, as I was thinking of the Janes Market. That's all I think of my questions, unless I find something else in my notes. Thank you. Commissioner Roundtree?
Mr. Chang, I have a question for you. I didn't see any visual simulations similar to the, let's say, the Lynn Road exit simulations that you had in the packet. If I'm just driving my car up the 101 Freeway and I look to the right, am I going to be hit with rows and rows of solar panels glaring at me, or is it pretty much mellowed out because of the landscaping that's there, and also the fact that it's set back from almost, what, 40 feet?
There are a couple of things. One's because the angle of how the Oaks Mall and parking structure is designed, so they're at the angle, so it's not really fronting the 101 Freeway. They're more like, like a triangle angle that, so it's really not exactly fronting perpendicular, or parallel, parallel to the 101 Freeway. So, and the other thing was the, a lot of landscaping installed by the Oaks Mall, as well by the Caltrans. So when you drive through the Oaks Mall, you will see, I think, some existing parking spaces and some Oaks Mall buildings, but you rarely see the parking structure until you really get to the Lynn Road exit. Then you have to take a probably 90-degree, look it perpendicular to the, to the right. So it's not really something that will be in your face. Staff has tried it numerous times from different perspectives. It's really not that visible, unless you really have to turn to an angle while driving on a freeway.
All right. Thanks very much. I'm sure we'll come back to you later. We're going to go to our applicant now, and speaking on behalf of REC Solar, Kim Strickland. And Kim, for the record, if you can give us your city of residence, name?
Okay. My name's Kim Strickland. I live in Pismo Beach, California, representing my company, REC Solar and Mesa Ridge. As Matt mentioned, we're, we've started on the roof portion of the common areas of the mall, which was packaged together with the carport. We decided to separate them because of the initial curiosity that the city had with the parking structure itself. We did take a lot of consideration as far as aesthetics go, and painting it to match is very important. As we know, Oaks Mall is a very nice structure, and a lot of money, and detail has gone into it with the recent renovations. So we tried to keep in the spirit of that, the offset and getting all of the, the solar panels in the center of the parking structure was important to us. We were able to make it work. We actually did initially have the panels facing the 101 Freeway, and working with the city knew that that might be an issue, so the change in panel orientation was intentional, so that it would be less impactful. We will be removing the light poles that stick up quite a bit on that top deck in the center, and it'll be replaced with very directional under-carport lighting. So it'll actually help with a little bit of light pollution in that sense. It'll be just pointed down towards the cars rather than up in the sky. So that's a positive thing, as well as giving customers at the mall some additional shaded parking, covered parking, we do see as a positive, and see more people, I'm sure, parking under there because of it, especially in the summer months or if it's raining. So we're very excited about the project, and I know that Mesa Ridge malls has a big initiative to do solar on a lot of their malls throughout the United States. And this is the second project we've done with them, and look forward to questions or comments you guys have. For me?
Any questions for Mr. Strickland? I guess not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chang, we'll go back to you now. Any additional comments?
Staff has no comment this time.
Commissioner Nichols, a question from Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chang, just to follow up to Ms. Reynolds' question on the second parking structure, that was entitled, but has the entitlement since expired then?
The whole phase, the project was approved by the Planning Commission. And the project, the facing is approved. So for any changes, they will need to come back to planning department for extension or redesign of the project. So they would need to find another application with the city.
Okay. And is there, if it were approved, is there a deadline at some point that if they don't submit some plans, that that entitlement will expire?
Yes. Staff does not know the exact day of, of the expiration day.
Okay. And did I understand the applicant correctly, that there were some initial concerns with the solar photovoltaic, and so that was separated from the parking structure? So is this presented to staff when the first parking structure was initially intended to be built?
I think the applicant was mentioning about the panels on the mall building, on the roof model, a building. So those are under the building permit process and state law. So those are under the building permit process and state law prohibit the entitlement processing of those applications. And for this particular applications, planning commission can review the carports aspect of the project, not necessarily solar panels, because state prohibit the city or the county to process any solar panel to entitlement process. So for this project, the planning commission is more reviewing the carport design and location of the project, so not necessarily the solar panel itself.
And I have one final question. Looking at some of the exhibits, it appears as though there will be some conduits and such going down the exterior of the existing parking structure. Any concerns as far as visibility of that, or has that all been appropriately addressed?
Staff, as part of the condition, require revised elevation plan to be submitted because those conduit needs to be, ought to be concealed or screened, so it won't be visible from public view perspective.
Okay. And any idea where that power ties in from the solar panel to the existing panel for the mall? I don't know if the electric folks have looked at that. Is that, is there going to be some massive amount of ditch digging around, or is it close by?
I'll have the applicant to address that, answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chang, just the one thing that I, the, think about is the part in the packet where you're talking about the freeway corridor guidelines and the mitigation of the site from the freeway. Mostly it's landscaping and the paint and all that type of stuff, I understand. And Caltrans, I know, is a part of that, but they can pretty much do what they want to do when they want to do it. God forbid something happened where that landscape changed. Is the applicant or any future owner of the shopping center required to rebuild that landscaping to mitigate the view shed from the freeway?
It is staff's perspective when staff looking at the plans as well, driving around numerous times. Even without the Caltrans landscaping, it is, staff believes that this carport does provide a great design because the carport has eight separate structures, so it doesn't have a one continuous roof facing a freeway. And the other thing is the carport, it is kind of 40 feet away from the edge of the parking structure. So it is staff's opinion that the carport won't provide a massive appearance, so looking at from 101 freeway.
Right. I'm talking about if the landscaping that is on the applicant's property there, for some reason, changes. A fire or whatever the case may be, are they required to rebuild that according to this particular resolution?
As a part of approval for the Oaks Mall expansion back in 2006, there was an approved landscaping plan for the Oaks Mall project, for all the landscaping within Oaks Mall property. So if there to remove landscaping or redo landscaping and design somehow, staff will make sure that the intent and purpose, which the initial intent and purpose of the landscaping along the freeway is to screen the parking structure somehow. So they will, the staff will make sure that the intent and purpose continue carry with that the approval of that major mall approval back in 2006.
So we don't need a specific condition addressing that?
No.
I would think not. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Mr. Chang, I know that when the parking structure was approved, there were meetings, there was a lot of controversy about it. Have you received any letters from anyone in opposition of the solar carports?
Staff has not received any opposition. And for this particular project, staff notify all the residents and within a 500-foot radius of the Oaks Mall, not just the parking structure itself, but the overall Oaks Mall. So staff notify all the tenants at the Oaks Mall. And staff will also provide one large sign at the one entrance that if any concerned party can at least see the project notification sign. So staff has enough sufficient notification to the surrounding property owners, but staff did not receive any single opposition.
Okay. Thank you.
We have one speaker. Mr. Kidway, you will bear a one speaker tonight. And of course, your name and city of residence.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. I, of course, like everybody else, support this project. I wish there was more solar and we were not in the last place among developing nations. I also appreciate the solar project that the city got done across the street at 401 West Hillcrest. However, as usual, we are mired in litigation with the contractor, and it's just, I don't know who's going to pay for it. It's just not good. This building here really needs solar, so you should really implore the city staff instead of closing on Fridays to put solar, save some energy, and have a zero-carbon footprint that so many of us desire. My main purpose of standing here is, I consider this a bonus card since I'm already here, is that one of the reasons we got involved, like I said, this was in 93 when across the street, the open space or nice area of greenery at Lynn and Hillcrest was destroyed without notification to the residents. And I will quickly read a little bit from the June 8, 1993 LA Times. What was talked about with Circuit City was there were backroom dealings, secret packs or closed sessions which shut out the public. "It's a cloud over the city council's head and it always will be," said Mr. Manny Ferrera, who led the charge against Circuit City last summer with a group called Concerned Citizens Thousand Oaks. I sure would love to talk with Mr. Ferrera. It's been 20 years. I don't know if he's still there. He was a Lynn Ranch resident. The city did not inform, notify the residents of the hearing, and they used to have a little sign. And one of the reasons I bring it up is--
Excuse me. Mr. Kidway? Yeah, Mr. Kidway? We're here to talk about solar, not other subjects. We're focusing your comments now on this particular case.
Could you speak a little louder?
We're talking about solar right now.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I--
You're going to, you're going to talk about solar?
Well, it is related because the sign that is out in the front, FTO TV can show that, that was because of Circuit City, we 20 years ago asked and got the bigger sign. But 20 years have gone and the sign, the world has changed and the sign is inadequate.
And I'm confused how that relates to solar. How does that relate to solar? We're on a specific--
This is a sign for the solar. This is a sign that informs the residents, and there's so much garbage on the sign, it's very difficult. You cannot stop there. You are making a left turn, and this is happening all the time. Is that, it's been 20 years. We went from a small sign to this big sign, but there's so much written on it, that's what happens with government. And now we have the internet. So why not put internet address on the city so that you need people to have the red flag that there's a project going on over here? And if you want to find about it, you, where is it? I mean, you go on your iPhone or you go on your, on your iPad and get the information. And that is lacking, and that's one of the main reasons I wanted to bring to your attention and maybe in your planning comments, you might ask staff, because you have this six, seven weeks remaining, to come up with something new that would be of the 21st century, of the internet age, that will inform the people so that you will not have, I mean, we just went through the Westlake fiasco also. This is all related, is that there are peoples like you, Mr. Chair, and other planning commissioners that want to involve the residents and want to reach out to the community, and we are failing in some ways. And why are we failing? Can we improve ourselves? And that's all I'm asking. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidway. Since we've gone back to staff, Mr. Chang, you probably have no additional comments, or do you have any additional comments? Because I'm going back to our applicant here for a rebuttal here.
Staff has no comment.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Strickland, if you'd like to come back and speak for another five minutes, any items that have been brought up?
I just wanted to address the question about the conduit routing. So that will be screened and painted to match with some sheet metal or something that looks decorative to sort of match the column and the spirit of the parking structure itself. That's on the exterior. There's two different paint tones there, so we'll make sure that it matches and blends in. We will be routing the conduit along with the existing conduit on the first deck, the ceiling of the first deck of the parking garage, and painting that, there's a sort of an off-white color that it's painted. There's a lot of existing hanging conduit. There's some sprinkler lines there as well. And then we'll be coming back down and boring under to get to our point of connection, which is near one of the loading zones in between Nordstrom's and the food court area. So there'll be very little trenching. We're going to try and avoid that if at all possible and do it when there's not the public around so that we get it done and patched up quickly. So that was our solution to minimizing the trenching and then hiding the conduit as much as possible so that you don't even notice it's there.
Commissioner Trepel, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Just real quick, just as you were speaking, how long does it take a project like this to, from start to finish to complete?
As far as the mechanical impact, it should only take about three and a half weeks. There's a good portion of electrical work that has to come back and be done with scissor lifts and things like that, but it's very minor electrical work at that point. But the sort of heavy lifting and the major mechanical work, about three and a half weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
So the upper deck will be closed completely during this time?
For the three and a half weeks, that's correct. Just the upper deck. We'll leave the bottom two floors--
And I wonder if staff has a problem with that, with the loss of parking spaces that are required? We can go back to staff after she, well, this is a rebuttal time, correct?
We're going to stick with Ms. Strickland right now, and then we can come back to staff for any additional comments.
Then have to call her back up if there's something. Okay.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Strickland, I know recently the mall has installed some electric vehicle charging stations over by the theater. Is that a possibility with these types of solar panels? Do they generate enough electricity where you could provide that type of charging station for vehicles?
They can. These particular ones won't be tied into the same meter, so they'll be totally separate, but they definitely can, and they make systems that do.
Okay. Just curious, because I didn't know if that was something in the future that we might be seeing nearby. Thank you.
Possibly.
Any other questions for Ms. Strickland? Okay. Mr. Chang, back to you. Do you have any of your following questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Reynolds?
I just think that, I'm sure that there is adequate parking because there's so much parking around the Oaks Shopping Center. So I now rethought my question about closing the top deck. I'm sure that there's adequate because I think there are more than needed spaces anyway there, so. Did I answer my own question?
Yes, staff has--
Hi, thank you.
Yeah. Numerous site visits, and staff will ensure the construction will be doing, for example, the Christmas shopping time, needs to be outside that windows. Otherwise, they do have enough parking space at the Oaks Mall.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Ms. Strickland, any other comments, questions before I close the public hearing? Are you, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, before I close the public hearing, do you have any other questions or comments for any of our, no? Okay. So I will close the public hearing. Commissioner, comments, questions, suggestions, motions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. My favorite place. Shouldn't say that. Anyway, I think that this is a great innovative idea. I'm really pleased we just approved carports over at a new building in Westlake Village. And I think that this is what's happening in our future today. I went over to North Ranch, and I know when I left there after viewing our next project, that I was surprised at how many homes have solar panels on top of their houses now. And I really think that this is something that will be looked at and for the future and to use our own energy or the sun's energy to generate electricity is just the right thing to do. So with that, I will move approval of the DP MN 2014-70173 with the findings and the conditions as in the packet.
Discussion of the motion. Commissioner Trepel?
Yes, I just want to think, I think Maysrich is an incredible company. They're very, very good to the communities that they serve. We're very fortunate to have them in this town, and I think the project is very exciting, and I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes, I too would support the motion. In my day job, I see a number of these where we approve them on larger parking structures as well, and I see this as a growing trend. Seems like a logical location for them. You provide shaded parking, you get an energy source on the flip side, so it seems to be a win-win, so I think it's a great idea.
I'm going to echo my fellow commissioners and also just throw in that it's, I think, exciting for both all of us as commissioners and city staff and also the public to be involved in the first of anything, especially since it's so earth-friendly. So I will also be supporting the motion. So without any other questions or comments, please vote.
It's not showing up on the screen here, but I think it's a 4-0 vote.
But let's do a voice vote.
Or a voice vote, because it's not showing up.
Let's do a, let's do a voice vote then, Lilia.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Trepel?
Yes.
Motion passed, 4-0.
And as a reminder, there's a 10-day right of appeal with the Community Development Department. With that, will the clerk please call case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case RPMJ 2013-70166, OTP 2013-70167, and LTP 2013-70168. Applicant: North Ranch Country Club. Request to allow an increase in the driving range fence height from 55 feet to 75 feet and to allow encroachment into the protected zones of 20 oaks and five sycamore trees. Location: 4761 Valley Spring Drive.
Mr. Chang, you're on again.
Good evening, Chair Roundtree and members of the commission. For your second consideration today, residential plan development major modification for North Ranch Country Club is requested to allow the increase of driving range netting. If you can turn the attention to the screen in front of you for the PowerPoint presentation. And for this project, the applicant is requesting to allow the increase in the driving range netting from the existing 55 feet to the proposed 75 feet tall. And the project also includes the encroachment, which is to be construction encroachment, nothing removal. The encroachment into the protected zone of 20 oak trees and five sycamore trees. And this is the location of the North Ranch Country Club. It's kind of vastly a long stretch of parcels between the Lakeview Canyon and Cannon Row. And the driving range is at the middle where the arrow shows, that's where the driving range is. And this is a closed-up picture of the driving range and vicinity. And to your left-hand side is the driving range, this was the clubhouse. And to the right-hand side, you can see the project site where the yellow marker is. No, the red marker, the red marking shows the existing fencing locations. And right behind that red marking is the employee as well, the contractor, parking area-- And right behind that red marking is the employee as well, the contractor parking area, as well as the maintenance yard, buildings, and some mechanical equipment. And for the background information, the North Ranch Country Club golf course was approved back in 1973. And over the years, and there are several modifications to the country club golf course, including the addition of a clubhouse building, the addition of a tennis court, and modification to the golf outbuildings, or even the golf course design itself. And there were two particular items regarding the netting. And one is back in 1991, there's a 40-foot-high driving range netting was approved to the minor modification. And in 1993, there's another 25-feet-tall driving range netting, which is next to the previous approved 40-foot netting at the driving range location. For this particular project, the existing driving range netting is about 55 feet tall, located at the eastern end of the driving range. You can see from the pictures, and also the pictures as part of the staff report. And the driving range netting is very close, or literally adjacent, to the maintenance yard buildings, as well as the employee parking spaces. And the applicant is requesting a 20-foot increase to 75 feet high. And for this particular project, the applicant is going to remove the existing fencing and pole, and dig a new footing, a bigger footing, to accommodate a brand-new 75-foot tall and And currently, there are 12 poles existing. And for the proposed project, there will only be 11, so there'll be one less pole. And the length of existing fencing or netting is about 450 feet long, and the proposed will be 500 feet. But the material will be very comparable to the existing material, which is kind of a black mesh netting design. And this is a picture standing from the tee box, looking at the driving range netting. You can see part of the netting, and some of the netting, as well as the poles, kind of screened by the existing oak tree or landmark tree out on the side. This is another picture looking at a different, a more closed-up picture of the existing And this is a picture showing what's behind the existing netting, which is the employee and contractor parking space, as well as the maintenance yard, buildings, and there's some equipments, a store behind the netting. And please look at the pictures. The grays kind of vary. Some are 10 feet or 15 feet below the existing netting, existing pole locations, and some are more probably 5 feet. So the grays are uneven behind the netting pole locations. You can tell by this picture that, for example, on the left-hand side, the vehicles are way much lower than the pole location is. So there's a significant gray difference, kind of vary throughout the, behind the netting. And there's another picture looking at, from the back of the netting, looking at the netting, and as well as what's behind that. So there's some equipments, the trash enclosures, and a tent for the equipments. And this is, I think, maybe a better picture showing the gray difference, showing the gray level where the employee parking is, and the pole of existing golf netting. And staff has evaluated this project, and it is staff's opinion that this project is comparable, or to some extent, even less than what other golf courses have done in the city. As staff prepare a table in your staff report that mention about other golf courses in the city, and what the driving range length, and also the height of other driving range netting. And for this particular project, the overall length of the netting is about 500 feet long. Compared to other golf courses, there are about 1,700 lengths of the net. So for this project, it's relatively short compared to other golf courses. And this project will not be visible from scenic highway system, which is defined as a major street, which would be, for example, Westlake Boulevard's or Cannon's. So this project is not really visible from some of the scenic highway systems. And the other things staff would like to mention is, can tell by the picture, that the existing netting is screened by a lot of mature, existing landmark oak trees. So some of the existing fencing is not really visible from different perspective. For the landmark tree and oak tree request of this project, the construction will involve encroachment of 20 oak trees and five landmark trees, and the purpose to remove the existing pole, and dig a new pole, dig a new footing, and to accommodate a bigger footing for the poles. And for this project, there are no oak tree or landmark tree removal in association with this project. So more about just construction encroachment, as well as some necessary trimming to accommodate the new fencing. And staff has consulted with city oak tree consultants, and our oak tree consultant does not believe this project will create any significant impact to the oak trees or landmark trees. This project is an exempt from California Environmental Quality Act as a Class II exemptions, because this project is considered as a minor changes or modification to an existing facility which have substantially the same use and purpose. And in conclusion, staff is recommending planning commission to approve this project based on findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Staff is ready for any question.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Commissioner, questions? Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chang, first, thank you for the tour this afternoon and the free golf cart ride. I appreciate that. I noticed in the...let me make sure I get the correct page here. On page 25, the first item talks about to increase the driving rate fence height from 55 to 75, and related modifications, but I don't see anything else that describes what the related modifications are. Could you please explain that?
For this project, what staff mean by related modification is, for example, the number of poles. Right now, existing, they have 12 poles, and the proposed 11. And the other one is the orientation of the fencing is slightly, not 100% the exact same location, there's slightly difference. So the angle, some of the angle or the layout is a little bit different. And the other thing is the additional 50-feet length. So there are other modifications associated with this project, so...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that they were directly related to the fence itself, and nothing associated with the facility or outside of the scope of that fence itself?
Yeah, this is directly related to the fencing, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then also, with the activity that takes place within the maintenance facility envelope, so to speak, are there requirements based on what has been approved for the golf course in its entirety, that that maintenance activity take place only within a specific approved envelope, so to speak?
There is no specific condition prohibit the maintenance yard to be exact the same locations. So if the applicant do decide to change the orientation, or layout, or the location of the maintenance buildings, staff will need to review the application. And sometimes, some project might require a planning entitlement applications. So it kind of depends on the scope. But to summarize my answer, there's no specific condition prohibit them to this location.
Okay. And you were referring to certain heights being approved. So for example, a 40-foot height was approved, and a subsequent 25-foot high extension was approved. But I don't see anything as to when the 55-foot height was approved. Could you please explain that?
Based on staff's research, what city approved for this particular project is the 1991 40-feet-tall netting, and the 1993 project, which was a 25-feet-tall netting. And the rest of the project didn't kind of go through the city for approval. Staff doesn't have any record of kind of 55-feet netting. So it could be possible that over the years, that applicant did put out additional fencing without our city's permission.
Okay, all right. That helps, thank you. In trying to review this project, I was looking at some of the exhibits, and it primarily looks to be like an oak tree exhibit. And I would have to say that the oak tree report and the exhibit is very comprehensive, but I don't see a lot of exhibits that are very helpful in the project itself, as far as what's trying to be protected. No real elevations, no photo simulations. Was there material that wasn't provided to us, or do we have all that was submitted?
Applicant did provide elevation, which is Exhibit B. Basically, he mentioned the height of the netting and the color. And the other thing they provide to the staff is material board for the actual netting they're using, I think a black mesh design. So I do have on the diaphragm here, but I only have one copy, so I can pass it on to the commission for the material board. They did submit a material board.
Okay. But as far as the facility itself, they mentioned what they're trying to protect, protect their personnel and their property, which I certainly would concur, that needs to be done. But there's nothing that shows in the exhibits as to what is it they're trying to protect other than oak trees. It just says maintenance facility. So there's nothing that shows the structures, the parking area, nothing that identifies what those areas are. Is that correct? Because I didn't see anything in the packet.
What staff has is the attachment number one from the North Ranch Country Club describing the purpose for this particular project. Maybe the applicant can fill out, provide additional information for the intended purpose to explain, to further explain what's the reason for this project.
I did read that and appreciate it, but there's no site plans that actually, in my mind, clearly state what they're trying to protect. So I can bring that up with the applicant as well. And I also, you just briefly mentioned it, there appears to be a change in the fencing, but the exhibit does not indicate what's a proposed location or an existing location. So that was also a concern of mine, is I don't know really what's being proposed here. I assumed it, but it's not calling it out, unless I missed something.
On the Exhibit A1, in the middle of it, it does show existing netting and proposed barrier netting. One's like a dash line, one's like a solid...it's kind of very hard to tell, but it is. You might be missing.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is I just think the exhibits are woefully inadequate here, so I will continue to pursue that with the applicant as well. I just wanted to verify that. And then lastly, if you could clarify, there was a comparison made to other golf courses in the community with fences and whatnot, but to my recollection, all those fences that have been installed are to protect adjacent properties or neighbors, not their own property. Is that correct? This is the...the North Ranch proposal is to protect their own property. All other cases, the fences are installed to protect somebody else. Is that correct?
For Las Wolles Golf Course, the netting is protecting the ball hitting over the freeway. And so, based on staff recollection, there's an office building behind it. So I was sure staff, the office building was part of a golf course, but they're protecting the office building. And for the Westlake Golf Course on the Westlake and Lindero, that's protecting the street and also 101 freeway. For this particular project, it is just protecting the employee and the property maintenance for the golf course.
All right, I just want to make sure I was correct on that. And then one last thing, in our tour today, I was noticing the area that you mentioned that creates kind of a higher elevation directly behind the fence, and between the fence and the employee parking area, appears to me to be a buildup over time of depositing green waste, wood chips, the pills from aerating the greens, and it just has built up and up and up over time. It's almost like a mini landfill of sorts. Is there any regulatory oversight on that type of activity? Are they free to use that area as they desire for green waste deposits? Or is it, is there some type of restriction that they should not be doing that?
Staff, it appears that some of the work might require a grading permit. For any grading permit will be, if they remove more than 50 cubic yards, it will require a grading permit. Staff does not recall there's any associated permit with that type of work. Regarding to the other aspect of commissioner's questions, staff doesn't have any, is unaware of any permit was issued to that, to that work.
And then one last thing, I think I remember seeing something in the oak tree report about seeing some storage and parking beneath the protected oak trees, but I didn't see any conditions requiring that to cease. Is there some way to address that, whether they permanently fence oak trees, or whatever happens to be sycamore trees, so that all those tractors and pots and everything else that they're storing beneath it can be relocated elsewhere?
As part of the...if the project is approved, city staff does require a temporary netting or temporary fencing as a, to try to prevent any additional construction access or storage of vehicles. And planning commission does have authority to impose additional condition if you so desire to require any construction materials or any other related equipment to be stored outside the oak tree or landmark tree protective zones.
Yeah, because it seems to be an ongoing issue, not just a temporary issue for construction. So I think if we could address that, that would be very helpful, I think, and appropriate. That's it for now, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chang. I'm very pleased I went on the tour today. I had my eyes open rather than just reading the report. It was really helpful to go back in the maintenance yard. And I noticed the netting over the cars is protecting the cars, and there were numerous golf balls on it. Is that something that they need a permit in order to put up, or may they just go and do that?
For the netting and for the pole, since there are temporary structures, they don't need the permit. But for the 75-foot-high pole and netting, that do require a building permit.
Right. And even though there were exhibits in the packet, I know on the page 27, it says that the safety issues associated with golf balls being hit or existing fencing. And I was glad that this was a day that the driving range wasn't being used, because there were so many golf balls around. And even as we tried, started to walk down, there were, seeing those buckets that Commissioner Nichols was talking about, and the tractors, that there were even balls in the dirt and all over the facility. I'm very concerned about the oak tree report, and I wanted to ask, I believe it's Mr. Campbell, there's quite a bit of verbiage in the report about the maintenance of the trees, that there are limbs that have fallen that are in the middle of the trees. I just get the feeling that the trees really aren't looked after very well on the golf course. And I was wondering from the report that was submitted, if you felt the same way. And I'm just picking it up from the verbiage that's in the report.
Yes, but they're not required to do anything, unless there's a target. In other words, if they fall on the golf course itself, we just pick it up and take it away. It's as if they're in a natural area.
Right. Right. But I wonder if they really have a maintenance program to go out and really check all the trees.
You could ask the applicant. They have an arborist on staff.
Oh, okay.
And I think, I believe they're representatives here.
And back to staff, I don't know because there was an alternate plan submitted to us, and I don't know if that's something even maybe I need to ask Mr. Hee-Her if it's something we can even discuss tonight before I say anything else.
Well, if you're speaking about the alternate plan that was submitted by a neighbor resident, you can certainly ask the applicant if they have reviewed that and if they had any comments about that. That's, that's what it would be as far as if they had any plans or any, any response to that, to that report that was given to us.
Okay. So we really can't redesign it, let's say not approve the project and then say we want the second?
Correct, correct. The applicant's, and that's a great point, the applicant's project is applicant's project.
Right.
And I'll give everybody, the chair and all the commissioners, first of all, good evening, some caution just on, on, on questions regarding other things that you might see, whether it's a golf course or whether it's a, you know, housing development that's already happening, build that. I give you caution of, of ensuring that the focus tonight is on the project that you have before you. If you see other issues that you see, and I'll just give you hypothetical where you are going to an apartment complex and, and it's, it's in three phases and you're going to phase three. And, and as you're looking for the phase three issue, you see something on phase two and you say, well, let's address that. But before you is phase three, I give you caution that tonight or what's before you is what you have to be focused on. And so if there's issues about other aspects of a project that you have concerns about, certainly ask staff to look into those issues. And that's certainly appropriate, but to attempt to put conditions on a, on an aspect that's not part of a project, we, I give you caution about that.
Okay. Even though the oak tree report is part of the...
For the oak tree report, certainly if you have concerns about how the oak trees are being taken, I mean, that's why I didn't stop you with your, with your other question. But as far as if you see oak trees that are on the, on anyone's property, for example, and say, well, I want to be, I'm concerned about oak tree five, six and seven, but the applicant's only dealing with oak trees for the project of one, two and three, that's where I would give you caution about that.
Okay, thank you. Then, yeah, stop me if I'm wrong on my next remark to Mr. Chang. It says in the report that they could limit what's used on the driving range, the type of ball requires, I believe that. It's in staff report.
I think you're talking about the, the residence report.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Then I will not bring up about...
And again, for the applicant, if you want to ask the applicant, I believe the applicant has received that report. And, and if not, that's something to address as well.
I'm sorry. I was confused.
It's okay. I think the applicant, the resident who brought in a report had a number of different options that they thought were appropriate. I believe that report was either given or already provided to the applicant to address. And so those questions might be certainly given to the applicant. The applicant might have one quick answer, might have a number of answers and might have gone through a number of these things. I certainly do not know that at this stage, but that's something you can ask applicant.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say again that I think this is one project that was really important for us to be out and take a look at. Because I sure have my eyes opened. Anyway, that's all my questions.
Commissioner Turpil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if this is to Mr. Chang or Mr. Campbell, but when I was out on site today and taking a look at our Exhibit A1, there's that last post that I think is close to building, Mr. Chang, we were looking at that, Building 65, I believe. And there was one tree there, I think it was 85 or 86. I can't remember there. But a look at the way the positioning of the post was going to be, the encroachment on that particular tree, it, to me, and not being a professional arborist or anything, looks like they'd have to be cutting limbs off that tree. Is that the type of encroachment that we would be looking at? Healthy limbs, actually. Is that...
As part of your supplemental packet, on the last page of that supplemental memo, the applicant's arborists provide a picture mentioning that pruning to tree 65 could be avoided by adjusting the pole or fencing locations. Staff, it is staff's initial reaction that some trimming will be required for the, for the new fencing. But the applicant has provided additional memo to address that. Maybe the applicant's arborists could answer your questions.
Okay. Did you, did you say tree 65? I was, I thought it was more like 85 or the one way down at the end next to the arroyo. Maybe I can make it simple, but, and you may have answered my question already. There may be a necessity to remove some live limbs in the encroachment and they have to come before you first before they do that? Or they're at free will to do that off of this approval?
As, as part of this project, planning commission will look at the encroachment of the tree and all the landmark or oak tree that within the project vicinity. And the review process also definitely including any trimming that will be required. So if the planning commission decide to approve the project today, the trimming will be as part of the review process approval as well.
Okay. But they don't have to come back to the department to say, we're going to cut this, we're going to cut that. They can arbitrarily make that decision on their own on the encroachment.
For, for, for project scope, if the trimming or the project construction encroachment is within the parameter of the, the planning commission's approvals, you won't need to go back to the planning commission to review unless the project was altered in a significant way that will require planning commission review again.
Okay, I'm, I'll listen to it. I'm not so sure. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm phrasing the question incorrectly.
Let me try, because I think I know where you're going.
Okay.
They have the permission. They're out with the chainsaws. They're cutting down limbs. Can they just cut at will? Or do they have to go back and get a specialist or an expert to tell them what to cut and where? Well put.
Richard Campbell, they have to come back to staff. We have a staff meeting in the field and we decide which branches can be cut and which will affect the tree least. So they don't just willy-nilly go out and prune the tree. We're involved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That worked out fine.
Mr. Chang, I have a couple of questions. And mostly my good questions are taken up by my fellow chairman, but I do have a couple that they did not ask. Generally, when you have a packet that you submit to us, whether it's for cell site installation or for something else, you do a very good job with a before picture and an after picture. However, this report doesn't show what a 75-foot pole's going to look like compared to a 55-foot pole. You know, I can pretend, but generally you have good simulations. Was there a reason that there isn't a before and an after in there? Because if we're being asked to approve a 75-foot pole, as big as it is, I'd like to kind of see what it looks like before I say yea or nay. So is there a reason it wasn't in there or was it just, wasn't submitted to you by the applicant or?
Applicant didn't provide the other photo simulations. And it is, I guess, alternative solution is if planning commission decide you do want additional information before you can reach a decision, planning commission could consult with the applicant to request if there's an opportunity to continue a hearing until the applicant can provide photo simulations or even a story poll to demonstrate the height of 75 foot. So there's an option the planning commission had with the consent of the applicant to continue to a hearing to a future day.
All right. I just found it a little unusual for a pole of that size not to have a before and an after picture. So that being the case, I have one other question. In 91 and 92, when this actual driving range was constructed and then also extended, it was done so as an administrative approval, which for lack of a better term, folks, means without planning commissioner approval. But now when we're making some adjustments to this going a little bit higher, it's now back asking for planning commissioner approval. So why, why are we being asked to modify something that was originally done in 91 to 92 over the counter?
For this particular project, staff does consider the height of the structures. And also in a previous case with the, the Westlake Golf Course, that project was brought before the planning commission back in 2007, 2008 for the 70, 70 feet tall fencing. So it is a kind of city policy as well from municipal practice standpoint that for the height of this magnitude, it does require a planning commission approval, not just a staff review level.
So is there a place where you draw the line and say below a certain level, you don't need it and above a certain level? Or is it just really a gut call or, I mean...
Thank you. No, we look at the building height limited for the zone. And in this case, it's 35 feet. And so obviously the existing fence exceeds that. I can't really speak to the previous decisions, but clearly in this situation, based on that height, same reason why we brought the Westlake Driving Range before the same body a few years back, we felt that it warranted your review.
Other questions from commissioners at this time? No. Mr. Chang, thank you very much for the, for your patience in this. We're now going to go to our applicant and Ron Wuinkle, the architect. And I assume Ann and Ryan are here as well. Okay. And for the record, if you can give us your name and city of residence.
Ron Wuinkle, Costa Mesa, California. Good evening, commissioners and chairperson. I'd like to begin with a little background. Back in 2011, the North Ranch Country Club came to us as judge netting. They were having real difficulties with balls going over the netting into the maintenance yard, breaking windows, denting cars and considerable amount of close calls with employees and golfers. So this is a little bit more than just employees and some property. It's other golfers. They have a lot of visiting golfers as well. So in our process with North Ranch, we started the design process with the dangerous conditions and the need for new netting, the existing netting being replaced and the poles basically deteriorating and corrupting and getting torn just by the wind. We started out with the program being the first stage of the design processes, what should we do? So we go over various alternatives of how to do it economically where it's affordable. And that's where Judge Netting is really good at, at what he does. And we looked at different alternatives, like I said. There are utility piping going through the golf course of petroleum and natural gas lines that feed the city of Thousand Oaks. So we weren't really able to move the netting wherever we wanted to. So with different alternatives of moving netting around, that was not a good, good solution because there is rightaways on both sides of this piping. So we came to the decision that the netting should stay in the same location. And by doing that, we felt that there's possibility of reusing some of the existing holes that the poles are in now. So we figured, okay, that would be really good to do that. Then working with the arborist, our initial design was to try to keep it in the same location. So we have adjusted the netting layout per the site plan based on the, the way that the oak trees are growing to try to avoid as much pruning as possible. Judge Netting has a lot of experience with working with environmentally sensitive landscapes and that. He's done a lot of work in the Hawaiian Islands as well. So I'd like to maybe discuss some of the equipment that'll be used. We have a small backhoe that doubles as the auger bit to drill the holes as required. And we have a truck that carries a hoist and a boom so we can reach over any trees or in between trees to place the poles at that time. And then the boom also has a bucket for a worker to be in to install the netting at that time. The way we came up with the height was a lot of times it's economics. So that was a big item. And also we wanted to keep it lower than the, I believe it would be northerly ridge line of the mountains. So anybody that's on the east side looking west or north, excuse me, south and north will still have a nice view of the mountains. And that's how we came up with the basic height of 75 feet. And that's about all I have on the installation and mechanics of it. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Yeah, thank you very much. Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. How many, how long will it take you to tear down and then finalize the new netting?
It should only take about two weeks.
And what happens to all the maintenance workers with all those golf balls coming in? You make it a hard hat area or, I mean, the car, well, there's a net there for the cars.
Right. We will stage all the poles and the netting and everything. And when we take it down, we'll remove it and we'll get it back up relatively fast. So operation wise of the golf course, I believe that they have already made that area a hard hat area now. Now that's probably something I should defer to the golf course, how, how they're going to do their operations. I just know that they've done certain things and they will continue to employ certain things even on their members.
I mean, I just see how many golf balls there are that were on the net and laying on the ground and throughout the whole area that can't imagine there not being a net there at least to stop some of the balls.
Right. And the balls are very expensive. And the, the membership, you know, pretty much insists on a good golf ball to hit. And the logistics of just retrieving all those balls is a major output of, of time and effort.
I can imagine. I remember as a kid doing golf balls down in Laguna Beach at the beach house in the golf course. And today, I mean, there were just so many around that, you know, we were picking them up, putting them back down. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Turpil.
Yeah, just a quick question. And I don't know if this is in your purview or not. Thanks for, for being here, by the way. Thanks for being here, by the way.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Because I was noticing that the, this is rather a short driving range compared to some of the other golf courses.
Yes.
Was there any consideration into moving the tee boxes for the range back towards the clubhouse to give a little bit more distance?
Yes, but there are activities going on in that area that they, I probably should defer this, but there are two greens, but they're two different functions. One is for practice putting, and one is for chipping, which those functions have to be separate. And there's really no other areas available for those particular activities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
The North Ranch Golf Course is a tremendous asset to our community, and we certainly want to make sure it continues to function properly. Appreciate your help in trying to usher them through the process. You mentioned that a lot of alternatives were considered. One of the comments that I read, I think it was in the letter from Mr. Lebowitz, was that relocation of the maintenance facility was cost prohibitive. But was redesign of that facility considered as an alternative, as far as not moving structures, but relocating some of the outlying, like the sand storage pits and things like that? Because I did notice out there today that there's a stretch of the fence that kind of takes a little while towards the tee boxes. It seems like you could pull that back maybe 12 or 15 yards and align it, which would cause relocating the sand storage area. Was that, were those alternatives considered as part of your discussion?
I believe so. Again, because of the utilities that are running through the golf course, I think that was the major issue, why we decided to keep it in basically the same location, other than the slight movement because of the oak trees protecting them.
If the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure is such a critical part of your analysis, why was this information not provided to the planning commission for consideration? I didn't see anything in the site plan as far as easements that would provide information to us as far as why that decision was made. Is there an exhibit that shows that somewhere, or is it just not available?
I would have to defer that to the golf course, the country club.
And are they going to make a presentation today too, or is it just you?
Yes, they are, will speak and answer questions as well.
Okay. If I could, then Commissioner, generally, we're given 15 minutes for the applicant to speak, and we might want to bring up Mr. Bentley now from the golf course, and then maybe we can provide another minute or two to kind of, you know, hear the discussion about it. But Mr. Bentley, you want to come on up? And if you could, for the record, give us your name and city of residence. And then commissioners, maybe we can provide a little flexibility on our stopwatch.
Thank you, Chair and commissioners. I'm Ryan Bentley, resident of Oxnard, California, the golf course superintendent at North Ranch. I do work in that area that's directly behind the fence, and my office is the one that has had multiple broken windows, so I can attest to the clear and present danger that exists at North Ranch due to the inadequate golf barrier netting. At this time, the netting is exposing employees, equipment, vendors, petroleum and gas company members, guests, outside tournament participants to injury and property damage. We are requesting your approval to avoid that safety issue. We've spent two years working with the city and felt that this plan minimized the environmental impact, the encroachment on the oak trees and landmark trees, along with suggesting a height that we felt minimized the impact on the view from our clubhouse and our neighbors. But to address some of the questions, or would you, how would you like to do it?
I would go ahead and use your prepared comments, and then we go back to questions. We can do a little...
Yeah. So that's my prepared, those are my prepared comments.
Then with that, we're going to go back to Commissioner, Commissioner Nichols.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bentley, thank you again for being here and...
Thank you.
Helping us through this process. Then let me restate to you, I was posing the question regarding redesign of the facility, such as pushing the, or relocating the sand storage area so we can push the fence back further. Was that considered, is it an option? What are the pros and cons of something, or other issues that you may have discussed amongst yourselves?
Yeah. You know, it dates back even longer. I've been an employee at North Ranch for nine years, and we looked at a whole bunch of options, but one of them being, could we push the net back into our, as you're saying, the sand storage areas? And it just cost prohibitive in ripping up asphalt and the removal, the demolition, and what we felt could be the impact to those existing trees in the construction that we'd have to do. As you saw, many of the trees, the canopy now over, is, you know, the canopy overlays those areas. So we preferred to try to direct the architect towards minimizing any new construction or demolition. Now, the other is, there are gas and petroleum lines that run through there, and there are some easements. We, you know, we really never thought about an exhibit in that situation. We discussed options of putting netting over the entire area, you know, horizontally over the area. Again, cost prohibitive. Redesigning our maintenance area, we felt like the environmental impacts of moving buildings, especially because we are surrounded by oaks, that we felt that wasn't in the best interest as well, not only for the cost to our membership, but also to the impact of the local environment. There is also, you know, the watershed behind us that's running towards Malibu Creek. We didn't want to encroach into any of those areas. So we really kind of got back on the track of, we have existing poles, existing holes, trees that have grown around them, and could we design a fence that took care of the challenge that we have going vertically and not moving it to any new areas? Does that cover?
It does. I'm not convinced, but that's okay. That's again, part of your process. Something else that I was observing out there is, you have a very deep tee box from the synthetic turf area all the way out to the edge, and then you drop down, you have a little lower tee box there as well. Is this an issue for people driving woods off the synthetic turf, or when they get out to the very front, driving woods? Or, I'm just thinking, can you restrict, say, hey, when you're out in the front, you can only use irons, things like that? You know, it seems like there are other options. I'll let you address that in a second, but it seems like there are other things to address. I found it very difficult to really determine what this project was, as I mentioned earlier, because I don't think I have enough information. The exhibits that are provided, primarily some of the oak tree exhibits, the site plan really doesn't show what you're trying to protect. It just kind of shows a fence and oak trees. And even the elevation just kind of shows a square. Here's a 75-foot, and it appears as though the base is perfectly level. And I know it's not level. It's like it's conceptual. And it's just, like I said, it's a woefully inadequate presentation of information. No photo simulations, no before and after, the existing plans. It's not adequate as far as what's existing, what's proposed. You know, if not for some of the supplemental information provided by some other interested parties, I wouldn't have a clear idea of what's being proposed here. So I find it very hard to put my finger on this, you know, without continuing to pull information out. The other thing that I wanted to point out was, as I mentioned earlier, other golf course fences are protecting neighbors. You know, this one, you're protecting yourself generally. So it's within your own purview, it's how you design that. There are other options, and I'm just not convinced that all those things have been at least presented to us. Maybe you folks have evaluated them, but I don't think I have the adequate information to make that determination. So I'm really having a tough time with reaching a conclusion here for lack of information. You know, I think that, like I said, the oak tree information seems to be fairly adequate, but as far as what is the project and what you're proposing, and where is it on a piece of paper that I can look at it, it's just not there. So I'm just very disappointed with that. Let's see, what else did I have here? And looking out there today, I mentioned this earlier as well, there appears to be like a little green waste dump area where you currently have some cut-up trees, wood chips, the pills from aerating, from grass clippings. I know you have a dumpster there, but all this has just kind of been pushed over the side. It looks like it's just kind of evolved over years, where it's kind of encroached. And so if that was, area's cleaned up, that would be usable area. So is that just like a landfill that just kind of keeps growing? What's, how's that area used?
So that area is used as the roadway that goes behind and loads up to our dumpster. It's actually designed, before my time of being there, designed to go right to the dumpster that you talked about, where the green waste goes. The area that you called, you know, buildup, that area there, at times, it's used as ground under repair. So today, there were aerification, what you call pills or plugs in that area. Those are there on the downslope and then removed within days. So that was taken today, will be removed today. So we use a green waste dumpster, and we do follow our storm water management protocol. We do have someone that works with us on that. So if there's any, there's no dumping, dumping is prohibited in that area, except for temporary. So temporary storage of a material and then for it to be moved. But that's built up over time and was developed as a road. It actually drives up to a pad that then we load into the dumpster with our equipment.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like it's like an evolving process out there. That's why I questioned, you know, considering redesign, because it seems like it's, obviously it's a tight space. You don't have a lot of elbow room over there. And just maybe re-looking at that, I think might be helpful as well. So I'll let the others...
Can I, can I address the one question about the restricted use of clubs? We do currently restrict the use of clubs. So if, at about the middle of that upper driving range tee, from that spot forward, you are not allowed to use woods, and we have a sign that is posted up. Email goes out to the members in the morning email. The lower driving range is another one that we do not allow, and it's one of those that we put the signs out. The members are used to that, so they understand. Now, you, we do have tournaments occasionally, and one tournament in specific is collegiate event, and they use the very back of the driving range and even the matting. And they can fly the fence at its current height, but we provided a trajectory study that shows that we feel like we could capture most of those. Of course, there could be the Tiger Woods of the world that could hit the ball over the net in the event of that. But we tried to keep the net at a height that didn't encroach too much into the view, as we understood. I mean, we have the same view with our membership at the dining room. So that's how we arrived at that height. And then, based on the amount of material that was provided, really, we were working with city staff and with architect, and so we felt like we provided what everyone asked for, and with exhibits and visits, we thought that it would be evident what we were trying to protect, and the multiple visits from staff coming out, we felt like that was enough. If I, if I had direction from, you know, that situation, we may have done something different, but we really kind of followed those recommendations as close as possible.
Thank you. And just one follow-up, the letter from Mr. Lebowitz, there's no title. What is his role?
General manager.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bentley, I have a question. The challenge you have is not unique to North Ranch, okay?
True.
I'm a golfer, I'm not very good, but I've been around enough to know. Technology with the clubs and some of these younger kids who can hit the ball 350 yards have made some of these courses obsolete, right? But the common response from many of these private clubs that are in very nice residential neighborhoods is to a limited flight ball. It costs a heck of a lot less to buy a bucket of limited flight balls than digging up holes and worrying about utility lines and the rest of it. Why is that something that the members maybe don't want to go for because they can't pull their club out and kill it? There's something. And I know the answer for other clubs, but I'd like to hear your response of why you or North Ranch doesn't want to go to a limited flight ball.
So that alternative was looked into as well, and from a standpoint of strategically placing North Ranch as a, you know, a marketable club, a club that attracts everyone, from good golfer to not-so-good of a golfer, we looked at, this thing that makes us a little bit different is that we can offer such things as the immunity of a finer golf ball to practice with. And through, you know, our research inside and talking with members through committees, golf committee, green committee, we found that there is many, many of our new members that prefer to practice at our golf course because they can hit a ball. They get that same feel. It's a part of the golf game, as you know, that if you're hitting a driver with a limited flight compression golf ball, you have no idea whether you hit a good or you didn't. And so from a golf pros perspective, which we got their input, we, from the golf amateur perspective, we got their input, and visitors, they like coming to North Ranch and using our practice facilities for that reason. So from the perspective of our ability to attract new members and offer the finest experience that we can to our members and new members, we felt like that was not an option.
To continue that, other clubs actually have different times during the day when they can hit their regular balls, and then other times when the workers are in the back, they can hit the limited flight balls. Any discussion about using an alternating schedule, because other clubs do that as well?
Yeah, and North Ranch is maybe not unique in that it's a country club, but it's unique in that its use starts at sunrise and ends at sunset, and the practice really doesn't slow down. And what we're finding in golf is that most folks don't have the four and a half hours anymore that it takes to go play a round of golf, but they do have the two hours that it takes to go practice. And so many, many folks have expressed that they enjoy coming to North Ranch or joining North Ranch because they're able to really duplicate the experience they get on the golf course, but on our practice facility, and do it in a much shorter timeframe so they can still work. So that's, that was, it was vetted and decided that we would, you know, suggest increasing the height of the fence is a better option for us.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, I think all of my questions have been answered, because that's what I was concerned about, restricting the shorter clubs, or now I understand. And you are only a private member?
Yes.
Okay. Except for all the wonderful tournaments that you have on Mondays?
We do have many Monday events, yes.
Sheriff's Foundation, yeah.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. Okay. We're now going to go to our speaker cards. We have three speakers. First up will be Mr. Edward Gripp, followed by Mr. Kidway. So Mr. Gripp, if you'd like to come up to the podium, give us your name and city of residence. You'll have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Edward Gripp, and I live at 1449 Dorale Circle. My house faces out on the first fairway and across the, across the driving range to the eighth fairway. And I bought this house, I mean, I bought the property in 1985, and when I built my house, there was no barricade whatsoever. And the, and one of the reasons why I bought the lot was for the beautiful view that it has, and it does have a beautiful view. The description that you talk about, two guests, two of the people came up here and talked about the conditions in the driving range. It was exactly the same conditions that my neighbor and I had, neighbors and I have. I've collected over 3,000 balls that have hit my property since I own it. I donated 1,000 of them to Junior Golf, and I have another couple thousand up in the attic, and I'm increasing them every day. And you can see my roof, if you looked at my report, there's a picture of my roof, and that's only the last few years of golf balls coming out, because gradually, the roof tiles fade out and, you know, look more like the original tiles. We've had numerous windows broken. Mr. Chang arrived at my house to see me repairing one of them, and since that time, golf ball hit the mullion and broke two of those same pad, the same ones, and I had to replace those. And if you notice on that picture I gave you, you'll see the frame around that window. I now put aluminum screen windows there, hoping that it may slow down the golf ball enough. So far, no one's been hit, but, you know, we never know what's going to happen. There's been some miscomprehension to, I mean, misstatements here, actually. It, the... The chipping range is over by the tennis court, not the area that you see at the golf course. There's two putting greens at that point. And the reason why we're here tonight is because the course, the driving range is substandard. It's like fitting a number 12 foot into a number seven shoe. They, they, what they put in there instead of a driving range, they put a putting green, they put a driving range, and they put a corporation yard. And those three things together, it's a substandard course that the, the range is about 245 to 265 feet, I mean, yards rather, deep. And the recommended depth is 300 yards. Now, I looked into how the trajectory of golf balls are and I got, I was able to get some pretty extensive articles here. This is research by a professor at the University of Minnesota. It talks about the Reynolds number, which I don't think is related to you, but the Reynolds number, which is, has to do with drag on the golf ball, the trajectory of golf balls and how golf balls are designed. I also got an article off the internet about the short range balls, you know, ones that drive best. And actually, I know now that when I golf at Las Robles and I never get over the water things because I'm using the, the range balls I pick up, all range balls have a limited line of flight. And they're, they range from, according to this article, 5% less to 30% less. So you can buy these different range balls for courses. And the Sinaloa Golf Course, the range over there, which is operated by the Department of, Seamy Department of Recreation and Parks, they use those, those limited range balls in that particular one. When I looked at the trajectory of golf balls, originally being a very novice and not knowing much about physics, I assumed that it would be an even parabola curve, you know? And that would be true on the moon, but on the earth, we have an atmosphere and the atmosphere contributes drag and the spin of the ball creates lift. So the line of a drop golf ball being driven is not a paraboloid curve. It's more like a teardrop. And you can see that if you take your garden hose out and you put the nozzle on it and you spray it, you'll notice that it goes out and then it makes a dive down. And when you went over to the golf course and you saw all the golf, the balls back there, which I admit, we have to do something about that, you notice behind the barrier that there aren't very many golf balls for about the distance of the height of the barrier. So what's happening is those golf balls are coming down at about a 45 degree angle. So building a 75-foot barrier will increase the protective zone 20 feet. Now, think about what you saw out there and you think about, okay, for 20 feet farther, there's not going to be any golf balls, but the golf balls are still going to be landing on top of the cars, breaking the windows. So that, that, and also, they didn't show you pictures of what this thing's going to look like.
Mr. Gripp, I just need to interrupt. You've got certainly five minutes and we're over that. And I'm sure some of our commissioners are going to have questions for you, but if you could just go ahead and...
Well, the first thing you said, you don't know what a 75, I know messed around tree, you said you didn't know what a 75-foot barrier is. Just drive between Moore Park Boulevard and Lynn Road and look to the left at the Las Robles Barrier. That's 75 feet high and it requires steel posts. And we really should paint that thing so it's not white, so you don't see it as much. It's not one of the better views of Thousand Oaks.
I agree with that.
And so that's what you're asking us, our neighbors, to put up with. Then if you're a member of the club and you look out down across, right now, the barrier is about the top of trees and you see the nice rolling hills going over.
Mr. Gripp, I do have to, we're limited to five minutes. We're now a minute forty over. And so I'm going to interrupt you here, but we're probably going to have some questions. So you'll probably stay up here a little bit longer. But for, for the five-minute portion, we've gone over what I feel comfortable getting.
Okay, that's terrific. You got my report.
We do have the report.
And the report says everything I would say.
And by the way, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. It was very helpful. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Mr. Gripp at this time? Commissioner Nichols?
Mr. Gripp, I have a question for you. Just thank you for taking the time to present some information. A lot of times we have folks that come and just kind of spout a little bit, but you actually took a lot of time to invest to do your homework and certainly appreciate that and the report here, certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Did have a question. You, in the report, you talked about a second fence, you know, back behind.
Yes.
A little bit high. And then just the comment you made here about, you know, that the additional height of the fence only gains about 20 feet of protection. Rather than a second fence that's perpendicular to the ground, what about if you had something that was maybe not a 45 degree, maybe like a 60 degree angle where it came up starting at the base of the existing fence and then going out towards the maintenance facility and, you know, and then tied into the top of the fence? Would that accomplish the same thing just?
No, I don't believe so because it, because the ball's coming down at a 45 degree angle, that gives you the protective zone behind the barrier. So by moving the fence back, I mean, by putting a second fence 45 feet behind the 55-foot barrier and leaving the bottom part of that fence open so the, so that the maintenance people can utilize that area if that area is necessary. And I question whether it is necessary because I think this, this maintenance yard is very poorly designed and utilizes the space very poorly. As you pointed out about the ground clippings and all that back there, I don't see where that really is necessary to their operation, you know? But maybe it is. But if it is, then put another barrier back there, leave it open 10 feet underneath because it'll be in the protective zone of the first barrier. And then it'll protect the additional 50, 45, 55 feet behind the barrier. So now you have 100-foot protective zone instead of a 75-foot protective zone. And you don't have a barrier that's, that requires steel posts because those are expensive. And you don't have a physical barrier of a 75-foot. And I'm as concerned for the clubhouse as I am for myself, what this thing's going to do to the view corridor.
In fact, that was the second question I had for Mr. Gripp is, you know, we really didn't have good information as far as the view shed impacts that this, this potentially could have. And you provided a hand-drawn one for that.
Yeah, what I would suggest...
If I could just ask you a quick question here. From your vantage point?
Yes.
Again, I'm just, because as equally concerned as I am about the needs for the golf course, I am for the residents around it. You know, staff has indicated that the fence is not visible from streets, but it is visible from within the community. And we certainly respect the desires to maintain that atmosphere within the community. So from your, from your viewpoint or perhaps your neighbors, what will you see as far as a fence now that you don't see, or excuse me, after it were to be built? That you don't see now?
Well, right now, the existing barrier is about at the line of the tree line. And when you add 20 feet above that from my house, it'll be halfway up.
So right now, you, it's not obvious to you. You really have to look for it, but once it gets increased, you would definitely see it.
It's bad, it's not good now, but it will be miserable afterwards.
Okay.
And it will be miserable from the clubhouse dining room. And it seems to me, I can't imagine that the club wants to build something like this that would obstruct the view of their, of their members from the dining room.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Just real quick, Mr. Gripp, and once again, thank you for coming down and spending some time on the alternative solutions that you have on here. I just had two questions and looking at it, you were talking about the balls that are hitting your home up there. Do you really think they're coming from the range? Or do you think they're coming from that fairway that you're next?
They're coming from the, from the tee, the first tee. And, and if you go to the Westlake Golf Course, the Thousand Oaks Golf Course, and you can see in my report, that they, they've taken very seriously protecting the public and the houses near the golf course. And all, if you did construct these relatively low barriers alongside the tee, those balls that would be sliced, many of them would be cut off. Not all of them because if you read the dynamics of golf...
I understand.
You'll realize that, that there's such a thing as lift.
Okay, I understand that. I just, I just wanted to make sure because that particular solution isn't in front of us tonight.
Right.
And then on your driving range barrier diagram, if I'm looking at this correctly, with the 10-foot opening on the bottom?
Yes.
And then is there 55 feet above that? So the total height is 65 feet?
No, no, no. The barrier would be 55 feet high, but because it's, it's within, it's at 45 feet and it's in the, in the protective shadow, the bottom 10 feet are protected by the first barrier. The second, the second barrier would protect.
I understand the logic there. I was just drawing a line across and you're, the secondary barrier is above the existing barrier. So I just wanted to make sure I understood the diagram.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's right.
So it looks higher, it looks higher.
Unfortunately, that diagram does not show the grade difference that's going down. And that's a significant situation. Even if they were to put a 75-foot barrier back where the cars are, it would only be probably 65 feet high, you know?
From ground level.
So there might be, there might be another solution where you could build, say, a lower barricade back at that point. Every, every 10, 20 feet you move back, the barrier, you gain, you gain, you know, 20, it's the same as putting 20 feet more on top of the, the...
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Gripp, I have another question for you. See, my friends get to ask all the questions. The report that we got from the city doesn't go into any great detail about alternatives. Okay? But can you share with me what conversations you've had with the country club regarding your alternatives or just the idea of something other than a 75-foot pole? What that dialogue has been like?
Well, I wrote, there's a letter in the report that covers that meeting with my neighbors are here. One of my neighbors is here. And, and we brought up all these different alternatives to them at that time and I wrote a letter to them. And they pretty much just, the manager pretty much discounted. He discounted the, our suggestions and he also discounted, he didn't want to talk about our problems. And that, I think that's bad because we're talking about safety here tonight. It's not just the driving range. Maybe legally it is, but, but we're talking about basically safety and safety for everyone, us and for the people. We want to see their workers, you know, protected. We like to see us protected. And we feel that the North Ranch Country Club should do what the other clubs have done in the area. We know it's not, you know, there's a risk living on a golf course, but it should be minimized. And believe me, if somebody gets hit and injured, there'll be lots of consequences, legal consequences.
Thank you, Mr. Gripp. I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to go back to staff now. Mr. Chang? Who? My mistake, Mr. Kidway. I, I, this'll be the third time I forgot. Okay, so I'm two for three. That puts me in the Hall of Fame in baseball. Mr. Kidway, you're up next, so please, your name and residence.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, not a golfer, but concerned about the residents. Honorable Planning Commissioner, Chair. The primary responsibility of the city is to maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods. Is also to uphold the promises made and the expectations for the future of, for the residents. This is the part of the city where the most successful residents of the community live. I was really disturbed to read the two emails that are in your packet. And those are the, two emails are cause for concern. I think there are probably more residents who would show up and would be concerned about it. And the interesting thing about reading your packet is, and the applicant's side of the story is, that really, a thorough argument really has not been made for, to increase the size of the, the height of the, of the fence. I am concerned and about reading that the vendors are scared and their cars have been hit. But where is the documentation? I don't see it. You don't see it? I don't think it has been presented today. So in the rebuttal at least, maybe some numbers can and should be presented because as the Chair pointed out, there's no visualization of the before and after of the 75-foot as to what it would be. And so I don't play golf, but I don't think golf has changed that much since this was incorporated in 91 or 71. I don't know when, remember? The game is the same, the ball is the same. And we really haven't had major problems as far as I know, and we know, at this, at this golf course. So why the sudden, sudden change? And I am disappointed in the staff saying, well, there is no 101 freeway, there's no visual impact to the driving public, et cetera. The most important visual impact is, and the most important asset that a resident has is their private property and these are worth millions of dollars. And they bought it on the promise that when they are in their backyard, they will see certain things. And they're used to it like the gentleman spoke from 1985. And to change that without real findings, I find very troubling. If TV will show my overhead, this is, I call lovingly the Fox Forest. This is the Las Robles Golf Course. And you can see the extensions. Originally, these poles were not there. 15 years ago, they were put there and then the extensions were put. And it's ugly. I mean, it's, but there is a liability problem. And in fact, Mr., our mayor was the Planning Commissioner in 1971 who approved it originally and then that is on the other side.
Out on the freeway side.
I was driving back from LA today and this is not the Fox Forest. This is a golf course near the Gene Autry Museum on the 134 West. And this seems to be the regular size without the extension. So there is no God-given right and there's no real reason to have these humongous nets and, and these heights unless there is a real need and there is a problem that you're hitting residents and you're breaking windows. And today, to this point, the argument really has not been made by the applicant and the onus is on him that after 25 years of successful operation, why do we have to change this? And even if it's two residents or three residents or five residents, the beauty of North Ranch should not be destroyed. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Any questions for Mr. Kidway? Thank you. We're now going to do a rebuttal by the applicant, so maybe, Mr. Bentley, if you'd like to come back? Actually, Mr. Bentley, if you can hang on just a second on the front row. We're going to go back to staff for a second here. Thank you very much. Mr. Chang, we're going to go back to you.
Staff would like to respond to some of the comments. And then one of the comments regarding the, those alternative solution to do a second 55-feet fencing. The staff has evaluated that proposed fencing, but does consider that, that the 75-feet, the second 75-feet-high fencing might end up be more than 55-feet because the grade difference, as you can see from the PowerPoint pictures, because the parking area right behind the fencing is about 10 to 15 feet lower. So the 55-feet-high might end up be 65 or 75, 70 feet tall. And the other thing that staff will look at now would be their perspective, their parents, because it is staff's position when you look at, we do... because it is staff's position, when you look at, I do consider that a second 55 or 65 fencing will create a massive appearance. So basically, you're looking at two, well, 255 or 260-feet fencing, instead of just one fence. And the other items staff would like to respond is, for this particular project, the applicant is only asking for the back end of the driving range. For other driving ranges in the city, they are surrounded with the fencing, whether it be 70 feet tall or 75 feet tall. But for this particular increase, staff does consider it's only a modest increase that they only request at the back end. They didn't try to enclose with three other sides, and for this fencing, they only do at the back way at the end. So it is not a kind of visual impact as you're looking at other golf courses in the city or a different part of the town. And the other thing staff would like to mention, that the existing fencing is kind of screened by a lot of mature, existing oak tree and landmark trees. So it is staff's position that even with the installation of 75-feet fencing, the appearance won't be that dramatic as you're looking at existing fencing. So it is staff's opinion that this won't be, won't create a kind of huge visual impact as looking at what you're existing. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chang. Mr. Bentley? We're going to go back to you for rebuttal, and you have five minutes. And for the record, your name and city of residence, please.
Ryan Bentley, city of residence is Oxnard, California. And in rebuttal to the comment about the two nets, we felt like that would be a more dramatic impact to the viewshed, because you would actually see not only from the residents that have spoke, or the residents that have spoke today, but from other areas. And so we took that into consideration. And so the visibility of one net with a clean design, a solid wood pole, as opposed to even an extension, we felt would be the cleanest design and the least impact on the viewshed. Also with the two nets, we may, and we feel like it would restrict some of our parking areas, our equipment areas. We do get deliveries in those areas, large trucks for sand and other materials. So there would be an impact there. And then also, you know, with our gas and petroleum lines that run through there, we would be, you know, the suggestion was to put a second fence in, and that would be right in that general area. So that was, in rebuttal to that. Also, there's one correction. The statement was made that we had two putting greens, and that we had a practice area on the tennis court, so that's incorrect. It is one putting green and one chipping green in that area. So moving the driving range back further would cause us to lose the putting green that we have. There is another practice area that we have that allows a person to hit a little longer shot, but it's totally different. So there is one putting green and one chipping green. There are the practice areas that kind of fit within that whole practice facility, is what we call it. So the driving range, the putting green, allows the members to, and players, to use both in the practice, you know, it's a practice area. So also, a second fence would encroach into the eighth hole and restrict our access. We would be driving around fence poles with large equipment, so we may have to even recreate a cart path, which has impact to a lot more oak trees if we're swinging it in a different direction, as opposed to using the current hardscape that's there with no additional encroachments. I'm not an expert on ball flight, but I know that Ron Hinkle, our architect, did look into trajectory studies and read the Reynolds Report, and we felt our trajectory study, or Ron Hinkle's trajectory study spelled out why we would, you know, want to go to the 75 feet. I think that was included. That is all I have.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. I just have one question. The poles are going to be wood, not metal.
Yes.
They're wood poles. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? For either staff or applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, any other questions? Commissioner Terrell?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Nichols was saying we did not see a representation of what the 75-foot fence was, and I swear we saw one. It's in the applicant, okay. All right, thanks. I just thought I was losing something somewhere along the line. Okay, thanks. You were talking about the difference, I guess, before and after directly. Okay.
With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and commission discussion, possible Commissioner Nichols?
I'd like to outline my opposition to the proposal, but I don't know if it's going to be a denial or a extension, but I'll just, let me just share my concerns, many of which I've already shared before. As was just mentioned, I haven't had the visual information, whether it be photo simulations or even a decent elevation to the before and after, to make a determination as to what this is actually going to look like. No elevation showing the actual, the height. No details on the site plan as to what is needing protection. No alternatives evaluated. We've heard some things tonight, but there's nothing in the report, or nothing presented in writing from the applicant, such as the maintenance yard design, use of different clubs, different locations, use of these limited-range balls, which I'm hearing about, fence, alternate fence, or multiple fences. No information on the utility lines or easements. No information on the current approval for the 55-foot height. So that being the case, we're not looking at a 20-foot increase, we're looking at a 45-foot increase. And I think that needs to be clearly stated. This is a self-contained problem. This is all within the golf course itself. They have the wherewithal to address it within their own capabilities and not relying on somebody else. And I don't think the analysis has been clearly stated. The focus has been on the fence, and yet that issue is the entire driving range and the maintenance facility. And we're focusing on this little fence. I say little, the big fence. But it's just, it was like, we're focusing, and we need to look at the whole picture. And I think that's not been addressed. We've talked about grading being, not grade, grade elevation changes being an issue from one to the other, and yet we have no information to see what those changes are. For that reason, I would oppose and deny this request. That's my position.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Commissioner Terrell?
I understand and share some of Commissioner Nichols' concerns. However, between the golf course, working on this for the past two years with the city, and with the respect that I have for staff, the, I've seen a lot of work that has gone into this to solve a problem that needs to be healed. I really appreciated Mr. Gripp's input that came to us. I've never seen that before on the commission, with all the detail that went into that. And as he pointed out, that technically, when it goes up, we're probably looking at an actual 65 feet of the elevation. I don't have any problem with the not seeing the before and after pictures. You know, we all walked out there today and took a look, and we see what it looks like now, and then the viewshed that we saw from the applicant made perfect sense to me. It seems to me that the, this is a business in town, and costs are to be considered, and I'm sure that they looked at every different angle as to how they could mitigate the problem they have out there. So what I'm going to do is, for the sake of discussions, go ahead and make the motion And I'm going to ask the Planning Commission to approve the major modification, RPM J201370166, to allow the fence height to move up to 75 feet. Oak tree permit, can I put all these together? OTP 201370167, to allow encroachment of the protected zones of the 20 oak trees, and landmark tree permit, LTP 201370168, for the five California sycamore trees. With the packet, with the findings in our packet, and in addition to that, how should I do this, Mr. Town? Would the addition of the root pruning request that we got in our supplement this evening?
Thank you for the motion to approve. There would be several changes to conditions, so I'd like to go over those at this time. First of all, as I mentioned in your supplement, you have some additional information in terms of tree trimming, tree pruning. Several trees were identified, as was discussed earlier. So with a motion to approve, you would be making a change to condition number 17, which is the condition titled Oak Tree Report Compliance. And the way that that one would change is as follows. It would say, "All work shall be performed in accordance with the recommendations provided in the tree report labeled Exhibit Tree Report 1, dated June 16th of this year, prepared by Kate Greeley." Then what you would do at the end would strike the words "Unless Modified herein," and to say "Including Supplement Number 3 to the Oak Tree Report, dated July 17, 2014." And that's the supplement number 3 that was in the supplemental packet that I brought to the hearing tonight. A similar change would be made to condition number 29 of the, that's overall condition number 29, but for the landmark tree permit on page 36 of your packet, labeled Landmark Tree Report Compliance. Have that same language at the end of that condition.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, just the root pruning condition that staff also is suggesting would be added to both the oak tree permit and the landmark tree permit. And we would give it a, we renumber these, as you know, anyway, so we would just add it to the end of each one of the respective permits. And then finally, just wanted to correct one small typo. In the middle of condition number 21 and 33, there's a word in there that says "Stat," and it should say "Stating" on the fifth line in condition number 21, for instance. So it should be stating that all of the work was accomplished, et cetera. So a comparable change would be made to condition number 33. Just correcting that one typo. So with a motion to approve, that would include those three changes to those, actually four, conditions here, and then the addition of the one condition to both permits.
Okay. And I would add that to the motion, Mr. Chair.
Anything else you want to add to that, or we're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I'm going to go along with Commissioner Terrell on this. And it's nothing against staff, because staff always does a phenomenal job on all the reports, but it was lacking our before and after that we usually get. Also, I would have liked to seen something looking down on the net, to see where the present one is, and where the new one, the poles, would be put, just to see, because they said that the poles would be changing the location. I realize for the safety of the employees, I'm concerned about even the downtime when the net's not going to be up, but I really think that they have gone beyond in their investigation and what needs to be done to protect not only their employees, but their vendors that come in, and their golfers. And I think that the increase in the net is justified. So I'm supporting the motion.
Commissioner Nichols, any further comments, or were your comments earlier similar?
I think I've made my comments. I think I'll stand with my position. One thing I would like to add, if the current motion goes forward, is to add a condition to require some permanent fencing around the existing oak trees to eliminate storage and parking underneath those trees.
I'm going to take a little different perspective on this, just as a golfer. Again, not a great golfer, but this is not unique. I've seen this five or six times before at courses of a similar size in similar high-end communities. So I don't want to say I've been through this personally as a commissioner, I have not, but this is not the first time I've heard this. What's difficult to approve is a project that you can't see. When you drive by something and you physically can see what it looks like, I mean, you think about all the projects around these various communities, where they require you to put up structures, so you can physically see something before you approve, yeah, story poles, thank you, before you approve it. And there's enough examples in town here where people have made a real example out of what could have been and what it turned out to be, because there wasn't the visuals at the planning level. So I'm disappointed that I wasn't able to see, and I'm not able to see, what it looks like, a before and an after. And if I said we've approved probably, at least in my short time, 10 or 12 poles of various capacities, cell sites being most of them, there is always visual simulations. I have before and an after from five or six different angles. This report doesn't have one of them in there. But more importantly, there has to be a balance between a community and the needs of a golf course. I've played North Ranch hundreds of times before. I've run four or five golf tournaments there. I love the course. But what about the people who spend millions of dollars on their home? They move into a community, there's no poles, and all of a sudden, they get raised another 25 feet, and there's no input to have them into it. What's the balance there? Well, you say, "Well, let's look to other communities and see what they've done." Not necessarily, "We should repeat what others have done," but at least they've been through the process before. So based on the lack of information that I have, I am not for the project. Maybe if it came back at another period of time with other information and other alternatives, I'll be open to it. But based upon the lack of information I have right now, I am not in support of this
So, Mr. Town?
Well, we have an interesting situation here. Because we don't have a full body tonight, what we're then looking at is a tie vote, a 2-2 tie, which doesn't happen very often. Our other member is out of the country right now on business and couldn't join us tonight. And so therefore, we need to turn to the municipal code, and there's a section in the code which deals with these types of situations. And if I may indulge the commission, it is Section 942806, and it reads as follows. Where due to the absence of a commissioner, a tie vote is cast by the commission on a motion to approve, additionally approve, or deny and appeal a permit or entitlement, or on the recommendation of the city council for the approval or denial on a permit or entitlement, print in the approval or denial on a permit or entitlement, I'm sorry, in the approval or, in the case of applications, my bad, being processed concurrently with legislative items. And the commission is unable to break the tie vote situation through further deliberation and votes during that meeting and immediately following the tie vote. Then the commission shall reopen the hearing and continue the matter on an open hearing basis until the next commission meeting, at which the tie might be broken through the participation of the commissioner absent at the original hearing. Okay? So what is that telling us? First of all, I need to ask the commission to recognize that we are potentially looking at a tie vote, and to reconsider your positions, pro or con, on this particular case. Is there any potential for a movement in terms of, from a tie vote, to either an approval or denial?
And let me add something to, Mr. Town, before we get too far into this analysis, because I don't want to get everyone too confused. We had two things happen. We had the motion from Mr. Terrell, Commissioner Terrell, and then we had what I would call a friendly amendment by...
a friendly amendment by Commissioner Nichols. And so one of the first concerns is that you have to address, Mr. Terpell, the friendly amendment, if you wanted to do that or not. And my other warning for that friendly amendment is, if I understand, that amendment would be to permanent fencing around certain oak trees, that would be something that would definitely have to open up the hearing again to speak with the applicant if that was going to be passed, because it has to be something that they have to approve, that's such a significant thing to do, and we'd have to have clarity as to what oak trees we're talking about. So that's the first issue you have to address, if you would want to have that friendly amendment or not. And then we get to the second part of casting your vote. If you have a tie, as Mr. Towne was indicating, through our statute, there is a requirement that you make a good faith effort to deliberate again and see if you can decide on a decision that can be voted on tonight with a majority. And again, if not, then as we read the code, as I read the code, we would, this thing would go back to the next scheduled planning commission meeting where we have the fifth commissioner present.
But with the continued meeting, there would be no new information given to us. So because of this stalemate that we're at, wouldn't it be better to withdraw the motion and continue this to another date so that additional information or before and after and more things to satisfy Commissioner Nichols and Commissioner Roundtree, so that they had more information about the project, where we may be able to come to a positive decision, or maybe a negative decision on it? But I think all of us feel like we probably could use more information.
My quick answer to that is, you would certainly have to withdraw the motion or vote on the motion, have the tie, and then come up with another solution, which would be to open the hearing again, request if the applicant would like to continue it to another new date certain, to provide information, and that's on the applicant's call. This is applicant's time, this is applicant's time tonight, and it's up to them if they want to have a decision tonight and have that vote, whatever happens tonight, that's their right to do that. You are correct that with the commissioner coming in, the hearing is closed right now, so he would have to first be updated, which we would do, for what happened, and he would watch the meeting, the televised meeting, to go through that again. But you're right, we would not have new information presented at that time, because the hearing has been closed. So right now, on the dais, you actually have a motion, and then you have a friendly amendment to that motion, so those two need to be addressed first, just for clarity, for the record, and then if we have a tie vote, which is what it sounded like, and I understand Mr. Towne's position on that, then we would have that deliberation as to what would the next step be, to have a different motion, or to request a continuance, if applicant's interested in that, that could be discussed.
Just to take one step back to Mr. Heer's comment, then the very first issue is to address the friendly amendment that was proposed.
Right, and that's what I was, is it proper for me to, at, you know, confer with Commissioner Nichols that if, because I have no problem with that friendly amendment, but would that change your position on the vote at all? If we adopt the friendly amendment and you would rethink your vote, is it proper for me to ask that, Mr. Heer?
No.
Okay, I take that back.
But you do have to address a friendly amendment, if, and again, as I cautioned you, the friendly amendment to me is a material change that was not addressed by the applicant or conferred to the applicant.
I understand that.
So if you're interested in that friendly amendment, that's something to discuss. If you're not interested, then the issue would be, you're not supporting that friendly amendment at this time, and then you would have a vote on whether you want to add that friendly amendment or not.
Okay, so then it's proper for me to ask the chair to reopen the hearing, to address the friendly amendment?
Not necessarily, no. What it means is that if, he's got a friendly amendment right now.
Right.
So your decision is to vote on that friendly amendment. Do you want to add that friendly amendment to your motion?
Okay.
That's what it is, that's what's before you. There's nothing about opening a public hearing at this time, it's...
But don't we have to open it back up to ask him if he accepts it?
Correct, if you're going to go that route, correct. You would, if you're going to do a motion to add that.
Okay.
If you're going to add that, then you would have to open it up, because you have to get clarity as to what oak trees, and go through that whole process for that.
So I'd like to, if it calls for a moment, to add the permanent fencing friendly amendment that Commissioner Nichols added on to the motion around the oak trees, to have a permanent fence put around those oak trees next to the maintenance yard to protect those oak trees from having any ancillary use close to them.
So of course, my next question's going to be, just for clarity, for me, what exact oak trees are we speaking of? Are they numbered, I mean, where can we point to so we can actually have that, so we have an understanding when we vote on that, that we're clear as to each one that we're talking about?
Okay. Yes.
If you have them, or...
Because I know which ones he's talking about, I know the numbers.
Okay. So... You know, Commissioners, just, Mr. Towne graciously provided me another section here, and it is a point that we need to make for clarity, and it was my mistake here. If there is a tie vote, the commission shall reopen the hearing and continue the matter on an open hearing basis until the next commission meeting at which the tie vote might be broken through the participation of the commissioners absent at the hearing. Correct. So I'm looking at mine and... Correct, the next paragraph is that the commission shall reopen the hearing and continue the matter on a hearing. So that's the next portion of that.
Question then. If indeed, we pass the friendly amendment with the individual oak trees identified, and if that did happen to sway the vote to not a tie vote at that point, we wouldn't have to go through that process? Okay, so we're back to identifying those oak trees.
Mr. Terpell, Chair, best I can tell, it would be oak trees number 69 through 78.
Do you have a specific plan that you refer to for that, just so for clarity if we can?
Yes, Mr. Heer, that was off the site plan A1.
a friendly amendment to Mr. Terpell's motion to approve it, that there would be permanent fencing around oak trees 69 through 78 as listed on site plan A, A1, excuse me, A1. And following the rules, you would actually have to vote if you want to have that motion added to Mr. Terpell's initial motion. And then, as I told you before, if that is the case, then you would need to open up the hearing, because that is something, such a material change to, was previously presented, that you would have to have the applicant understand those conditions and have a chance to discuss those conditions. So, Mr. Terpell, it would be something that if you want to move forward with that specific friendly amendment, you would ask, or the chair would actually ask for a vote on that friendly amendment. And again, specifically, it would be to require permanent fencing on oak trees, or the trees listed as 69 through 78 on site plan A1 in the packet.
And I would accept that and ask the chair to ask for a vote.
Yep.
Yeah, we'd need to have the applicant come in before we vote.
Okay.
Okay.
At this time, we're going to reopen the hearing and invite the applicant back to the podium, please. He'll be with you in just a moment.
Yeah, no problem.
the fencing around trees 69 through 78 on site plan A as part of the condition.
Yeah, I'd have to understand it more, I think we'd all have to understand what that is.
All right.
Meaning the, what the permanent fencing around trees 69 through 78, what that would be.
Gotcha. Mr. Heer?
Sure, first I would ask Mr. Nichols if he had an idea what he was, as far as permanent fencing. I did speak with our staff and our oak tree consultant, who's present, just in, typically we have oak tree protection around trees, it's chain link fence, it's five feet high, and it's, again, temporary issue. We'd have to get, again, this is a concern, is the clarity of what it would come to be as far as what you would request.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to get into the design phase, I'll leave that to our oak tree experts on that, but my concern was, having visited the site today, that there seems to be a lot of storage vehicles and, you know, plant pots and containers out there, and just seems to be a storage area. And it's not consistent with our oak tree policy to protect trees, and short of having somebody from staff to go out there to police the area on a regular basis, the idea that I came up with was to have some type of a permanent fencing, similar to what we have with temporary fencing in the construction projects, where it's, you know, identifying the drip line, and this seems to be a group of trees that are all kind of intergrown, one amongst the other, and to have a fence that kind of encapsulates that entire group to eliminate that area being used for parking and storage. You know, if chain link is appropriate, I don't think plastic would sustain the rigors of that type of use, nor the length of time that it would be up there. So perhaps chain link, something along that line, but to be consistent with our oak tree policy as far as the location and the design of that.
Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a comment with regard to the concern that Commissioner Nichols is expressing, just so the commission and the public are clear and the applicant. The existing oak tree ordinance we have, the oak tree preservation or protection ordinance in our code defines encroachment as the intrusion of human activity within the protected zone of an oak tree, including but not limited to pruning, grading, excavating, trenching, parking of vehicles, storage of materials or equipment, or the construction of structures or other improvements. So the storage of materials is part of the definition of encroachment, and the ordinance requires that a permit be obtained for any kind of encroachment like that, that it's prohibited without an approved permit. So it's two different ways to proceed with this. One is to work, it would be through our code compliance division, per the existing language in our code. The other would be to include more specific language, a new condition, as you're beginning to consider right now, for this particular case. So the commission may impose this condition, it would essentially be reinforcing, strengthening what's already in our code, certainly within your purview, but just so it's clear, the parking of those vehicles, et cetera, underneath the oak trees is not allowed under our oak tree ordinance.
So Commissioner Nichols, I guess the question is, which direction do you feel most comfortable with? One where the condition is added to Mr. Terpell's, or one where we just leave it out and have code compliance deal with it in a way that's professional?
I'd be comfortable with the other way the commission goes. That was just a minor concern of mine. I still don't feel that I could in good conscience approve the project for lack of information, so whether that's in or out, it's not going to change my vote tonight.
That's fine, just want to get the friendly amendment clarified. So if I hear correctly, you're withdrawing your friendly amendment request to Mr. Terpell, to where his original one would be proposed?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like I said, that's fine, if it's going to make things a little cleaner, I'd be happy to do that, because as I mentioned, it's not going to change my...
I understand that, yeah, I think what Mr. Towne was saying is that it's on the books, it's clear that there's some things that need to be fixed. Our oak tree ordinance is very clear about parking vehicles near oak trees. I think they're aware of it now, and for purposes of tonight, I think it's not going to do anything differently for all of us, so...
I would agree, then I'd like to withdraw the motion to pass the friendly amendment. And then I have another question. Well, I guess you have to close the public hearing again.
Yes. Are there any more questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing? No? Thank you very much for coming up again. Commissioner Terpell, you have a question?
Yes, I do, I just want to clarify the process, that if I withdraw the original motion and we set this to a, continue it to a date certain, that will allow the applicant to bring more information back?
Actually, if you vote and there's a tie vote, then you attempt to resolve it through good faith effort tonight, and if you cannot resolve it through good faith effort tonight, then we continue it to the next scheduled hearing, with the fifth commissioner being present. And as Mr. Towne pointed out, and I just, I apologize for not going all the way down to Section Subdivision E, but assuming that happens with the tie vote, it actually reopens the hearing, and we continue the matter to that open hearing time, so the matter is automatically reopened, we don't have it brought back as a continued matter. I mean, it's continued, but we don't have to reopen the hearing. Technically, it's done by the tied vote, and no ability to fix that tie vote. And just for clarity for everybody, we would open the hearing again, that brings, any testimony that comes in has to be weighed with the testimony that we've received tonight.
But the applicant would not be able to bring any more testimony?
No, he will be.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
It is an open hearing basis.
So whether we, I withdraw the motion and we made a movement to continue, or...
No, you do the motion.
Or we just go ahead and do the motion?
You do the motion, you vote.
And everything falls the same?
And assuming it's going to be a tied vote, which, that's why you cast the vote, to make sure it is a tied vote.
Mr. Towne?
Yes? I don't want to, I truly am not trying to muddy the waters here. You basically have three options in front of you right now, you can, well, I guess it's four. You can approve the project as presented, you can deny the project as presented, you can have a tie vote, which is, again, uncommon, but certainly anticipated in some cases. The fourth is, you can, with the applicant's agreement, continue the hearing to a date certain or uncertain, as you have done in the past. That's not a decision that the commission makes unilaterally, we would request the applicant's input on that. That's typically done in a case where there appears to be a denial, and the applicant would prefer to have a continuance. In this case tonight, if there is a tie vote, as we've explained, the case is simply brought forward...
Then once again, to restate the motion, I'd ask the commission to approve residential plan development major modification, RPMJ 2013-70166, oak tree permit, OTP 2013-70167, and the landmark tree permit, LTP 2013-70168, with the modifications added on that Mr. Towne adjusted to the findings and conditions.
Discussion on the motion. Mr. Reynolds?
I will once again support the motion.
Do we have any other discussion on the motion before I send it to a vote? Please vote. And hopefully, our votes will be, are they registering now electronically?
Motion, oh, the tie vote. Commissioner Reynolds voted yes. Commissioner Terrell voted yes. Commissioner Roundtree voted no. Commissioner Nichols voted no.
So, this will be continued to a date certain of September 8th, 2014? Yes, I do believe, Chair, excuse me, just, that you have done a thorough analysis of this matter, so we don't need to go through this. We've had the deliberation, very extensive deliberation on this issue, so I'm certainly comfortable with just moving forward to the next step, which is open date, I mean, open hearing with a set date. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Heer, once again, or Mr. Towne, once again, that with this open hearing, the applicant has the opportunity to bring in, based on what he's heard here, any new information he wants to introduce with our fifth chairman, Commissioner present. That's correct.
That is correct. You're going to take new testimony. You already have testimony. It's similar to a continued hearing, if you will, but it leaves open for the public hearing as well. I mean, everyone has the same rights as to presenting information for you to review and take in and analyze.
Thank you.
No, go on to Community Development Department reports. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September 8th, not only will we be reconsidering the case that you just heard, but we have one other case that night and then also have several cases already scheduled for September 22nd. And I anticipate that we will have two more cases coming before you in September, two residential cases as well. In terms of cases going to the city council that you have considered recently, those are outlined on page 49 of your packet. One is the hours of operation for the McDonald's restaurants on East Avenue, Los Arboles. That decision of the commission was appealed by a resident, or residents, and that will be heard by the city council on September 9th. And then also, the general plan, land use change and zone change that you recommended for the property on Willow Lane from residential to industrial will also be heard by the city council that same night. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In terms of minutes and resolutions, I need to have a motion to approve the minutes and a motion for the resolutions on July 7th, 2014. Mr. Reynolds?
I move approval of the planning commission meeting minutes of July 7th, 2014 and the resolutions from the 2014 meeting.
Thank you. Please vote. And as a reminder, I will not be voting on this because I was not present. Please vote.
Motion passed, three to one, with Commissioner Roundtree abstaining.
In terms of AB 1234 reports, commissioners, do we have any 1234 AB reports? Commissioner Reynolds, any 1234 reports? Thank you. Okay. Commission comments. I'll start off. I'll make them brief because we've had lots of discussions and comments already tonight. This is a very good example of four people having as much information as was presented and coming up with different opinions on it, taking it professionally, analyzing it as best as possible, and choosing to have just different opinions on it. We'll continue this matter at a different point. It's good teamwork. Any other comments, Commissioner Terrell?
Yes, just to follow up with the open hearing on September 8th regarding the case we just previously heard, will the findings and conditions be updated from staff to reflect what we talked about or no?
The conditions will be updated. Findings, we'll have to see if any additional information is provided that may bear on staff's recommendation.
Okay.
And shall we take all of our things? I mean, I've got numerous notes that I made in this report that I'd like to have with me for the next meeting.
Please maintain all documents. It's going to be part of your packet as you prepare for the next meeting. With that, I will adjourn our meeting to September 8th, 2014. Again, thank you very much and good night, Thousand Oaks.
Free mulch is available to the residents of Thousand Oaks. growth. Bring a shovel and some sturdy plastic bags to the Goble Senior Adult Center located at 1385 East Janes Road. For more information, please dial 805-449-SAVE. Las Robles Greens located in beautiful Thousand Oaks. Overlooking the breathtaking 18th hole, the strikingly designed banquet in community center is the perfect atmosphere to host weddings, receptions, banquets, corporate meetings, and any other special events. Whether it's formal or casual, the staff at Las Robles is committed to providing you with everything necessary to make yours an event to always remember. Las Robles Greens. To book our banquet facilities, visit us online at...